We will let that be the official gavel calling us to order for our regularly scheduled city council meeting on Monday, September 15th, 2025 at approximately 7:02 PM. Appreciate everybody being here. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present along with our city attorney, Mr. Hughes, our city administrator and assistant city administrator, our department heads, and the lady who keeps us all straight. Our council, what are we calling you now? City clerk, our clerk to council, our mama? One of those answers to all the hats. So we thank everyone for being here and for our public. And let's be a special presentation for some young people because when we see this many people in council and we also are extremely proud of our young folks in our community at large. That's my official welcome. With that, we have our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. I believe us, Mr. Krailing.
If you would please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you after challenging days in the last week. Last week, we lost one of our family members, firefighter, Malden City firefighter Dakota Revels. Please be with him and his family as they go through these difficult times. We also had our mayor who had some heart issues and got a pacemaker. Just surprised a lot of us that he had a heart. And then the big thing that's really been bothering our entire country, which is the Charlie Kirk assassination. This tragedy, this was a tragedy for our nation and the fact that we saw something that was horrid and something awful and evil. Please be with the Kirk family and out of this, let there be some light with that. This did bring the light, the darkness and the evil that's that is in our country. It came to light, the people there that celebrated, they wanted more. We didn't know that these, this country could be so dark. But you shined your light on this. Continue to shine your light. Start bringing peace to our hearts, peace to our minds, and bless our country once again, oh Lord. Please bless the city of Malden. Please bless the state of South Carolina. God, please bless the United States of America. Amen. If you would please raise the stand for the flag. Ah, sorry, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Krailin. For the sake of my voice and my energy, I'm going to ask our mayor pro temp, Mr. Mattney, if he would present the, let's see, first of all, no, let me recognize our city administrator Seth for our Municipal Association Achievement Award. And Taff can accept that.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. Sorry, I had the wrong agenda up there. So now that we have the correct agenda for tonight, I think we can keep going. We have Charlie Barino from Municipal Association who's going to come to the podium there and walk us through the achievement award. Go for it.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Charlie Barino with the Municipal Association. I'm one of our three field service managers in the state. And it's just a privilege if I could introduce your, the newest field service manager for the upstate area. Many of you know Naomi Reed. Naomi served you for about a little over two years and was promoted to our risk manager over our insurance pools. And so tonight, Rob Wolf is with me. Rob is coming as the now former, this is his first day, now former town administrator of Charole. So we look forward to having him and him working with you here in the upstate. But the reason I am here is to present the achievement award. It's been presented. You received this at our annual meeting. Congratulations on behalf of the Municipal Association. This is the Joseph P. Riley Economic Development Achievement Award. And without further ado, I'm going to get Mr. Duncan to play the video. And I think it really describes everything that y'all should be commended for.
Economic development category, the Joseph P. Riley Jr. Award, the city of Malden. Although Malden has grown substantially in recent years, it lacked a traditional downtown. The city wanted to cultivate a sense of community in a walkable space where people could live, work, and play.
Malden has done such a great job of growing their community and it's the entire state and the upstate. And so it's really not a hard thing to do to follow the growth, see where other people like to go, and then try and provide what those people may want.
It partnered with Hughes Investments to develop Bridgeway Station, an urban village featuring apartments, offices, shops, and restaurants in an Italian-inspired setting. That partnership also led to the creation of the Malden Gateway Bridge, a pedestrian bridge over Interstate 385 that links Bridgeway Station with the greater Malden community and will eventually connect to the Swamp Rabbit Trail. The city established a new form-based zoning district to overcome the Bridgeway Station project's regulatory obstacles. Much of it focused on walkability. The effort leveraged a multi-county industrial park for infrastructure funding, supported by Greenville County and the Greenville County School District. Hughes Investments secured more than $100 million in private investment, which provided critical infrastructure such as roads, sidewalks, and wastewater utilities, as well as parks and public art. Malden also used a revenue bond for the roughly $5 million pedestrian bridge.
We were known as a bedroom community and you just went through there to get somewhere else. And we knew that for the future that we had to do something to make our city a place to accept people who wanted to come, who wanted to be entertained. They wanted good dining options. They wanted entertainment. They wanted diversification of places to live. And so we needed to change that. I was reintroduced to Phil Hughes and we talked about what could be done. This bridgeway and the Italian motif he came up with and diversification of offerings of dining options, entertainment options, let's do it. Now, what do we got to do to do that? The undertaking here was going to have to be a partnership, especially in the infrastructure side of that. So through great relationships with our Greenville County delegation and talking to the Greenville County School Board to come together with the city of Malden in a partnership to do what we call the multi-county industrial park type tax incentive. It helped us, Phil, really his group, to put in the infrastructure. And through that tax abatement, we were able to pay him back for that infrastructure. The clear vision, the partnership, the willingness to work together and not at odds goes a long way. And you're seeing the fruits of that effort.
Now home to a variety of businesses and a full schedule of events, Bridgeway Station has become a hub of activity. Future plans include a multi-use sports and entertainment stadium that will serve as a permanent home for the Greenville Triumph soccer team, in addition to hosting concerts, festivals, and community events. Economic development category, the Joseph.
Again, congratulations. As a former city manager, y'all know these take a lot of teamwork, partnership, commitment. Takes all of you working together. And it's pretty cool. You look at this and it's over a decade, all kinds of names. And for the first time, the city of Malden's name is on this trophy. So congratulations to each of you. I don't know if y'all want a photo or I leave it up to you or we can wait till the end of the meeting, whatever is easiest.
Thank you, Charles. Okay, so thank you, council, for all the hard work that went into this. Believe also now our, some of our youth I referred to earlier, Chief Miller, would you like to introduce the Malden Police Explorers? Our youth movement did not include our chief.
Mayor, council, tonight I'd like to introduce our explorers as a group of young people that have a desire to be law enforcement in the future. So what we do is we put advisors with them and train. Sergeant Sechek will go over the awards here shortly. But if they go to a competition and they win an award, they don't come back and just sit down. They got to come back and train for the next one. They train every Wednesday. We got a great, great set of advisors. The older explorers we got are mentors for the newer ones and they just do a fantastic job and make the city look great. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Sergeant Sechek. And Sergeant Baker.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. I'm proud to stand before you today to recognize the outstanding performance of the Malden Police Explorers at the 2025 City Challenge held on, held on August 23rd, 2025, and hosted by the Lawrenceville Police Department in Lawrenceville, Georgia. Our explorers represented Malden with professionalism, skill, and determination, and their hard work paid off. And they brought home an impressive collection of awards. First place overall, first place in mental illness response, first place male physical training, second place female physical training, second place in active shooter scenario, and third place in crime scene investigation. These achievements reflect not only their dedication, but also the strength of the mentorship and training they receive. Special thanks go to the advisors, and it's not just Sergeant Baker, myself, but there's other advisors as well, whose guidance and leadership have been instrumental in preparing these young individuals for success. We also want to recognize the explorers who made this possible. So as I say your name, go ahead and step forward. Rolives. Malana Opapari. Dawn Hedrick. Tristan Elrod. Cheyenne Elrod. Kyle. James Hollis. Sorry, some of their last names I don't know how to pronounce yet. Their teamwork, discipline, and commitment to excellence are truly commendable. We are incredibly proud of their accomplishments and look forward to seeing them continue to grow as future leaders in law. I do want to say one more thing about our first place overall. So last year when we went, we won it, but we won it solely on points. This year, we want it because of their teamwork and dedication.
Good health.
Okay. And then, yeah, Cheyenne, go ahead and get the first place.
January.
Got a couple. Captain Otria.
Uh, January, they'll be going to Nashville for the skill competition in Nashville. Lot more different agencies involved with it. Be back in February.
Fantastic. Great job, chief. Thank you. Now I'll defer to our mayor pro temp, Mr. Mattney. If you would do the proclamations, please, sir.
Thank you, mayor. I'll give you a quick break. Our first one is the 2025 Hunger Action Month proclamation. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in South Carolina, where 14.4% of households face hunger and one in every six children do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas everyone needs nutritious food to thrive and in every community in America, people are working hard to provide for themselves and their families. Yet 757,840 people, one in seven, including more than 196,000 children, faced food insecurity in South Carolina. That includes 60,850 in Greenville County. And whereas the city of Malden, South Carolina, is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources that neighbors need and is committed to working with Harvest Hope Food Bank, a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of Food Banks, in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas Harvest Hope Food Bank distributed more than 25 million meals through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas 11.5% of the population and 12.7% of children in Greenville County rely on food provided by Harvest Hope Food Bank and its partner agencies annually. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the movement to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure every community and everybody in it has the food they need to thrive. Whereas food banks across the country, including Harvest Hope Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I Terry Merritt, am mayor of the city of Malden, do hereby recognize September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in our city of Malden, South Carolina. And I call this observance to the attention of our citizens on this 15th day of September 2025. And now for our Constitution Week proclamation. Mayor, would you hand me the handheld mic?
Yes, sir.
That's later. I don't know that this could come at a more appropriate time. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Terry Merritt, mayor of the city of Malden, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September through 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
And as the Daytona Beach, not, excuse me, for our presentation, we are very excited to accept this from the company that we've worked for. I have worked for all of my life to have people understand the U.S. Constitution. I was an American history teacher. And now we are, I used to, I grew up in Fountain Inn, Simpsonville, in Malden and got to move back here to retire. And we accept this, this, I guess you call it a recommend proclamation. And we're going to talk about it in the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution. And I would like everybody to remember that we are a wonderful country, even though we've had a lot of faults. We are a strong country and I would like for everybody to really get ready to celebrate the 250th anniversary of this country to come in the next year.
Kathy, thank you for being here. Appreciate, appreciate all the work you do with American history, passing it along to your students and everything. And I would be remiss if I didn't actually say that Kathy and I graduated high school together. We will not say the year, but there was no Malden High School. Appreciate that again. Thank you, Taff. Our next item on our agenda, guys, you have in your packet, the minutes of three meetings held. August the 18th, our regular city council meeting. August the 13th, there was a special called council meeting. And September the 2nd, our city council workshop. You've had a chance to look at those. I would ask you if you've got any potential corrections, clarifications, anything you want to add to, to state the date and make that public. Otherwise, I'm going to request that we approve them as submitted by unanimous consent. Any comments? Here none, then all those that would be opposed say aye. Here none, the minutes are approved as submitted. One of the things we're blessed here in Malden is that we are part of a community, a community of a diverse group of citizens that we're proud of. And we don't always think alike, reason the same, or have the same opinions, but we respect and love each other as members of our community. But I still have to read this and we don't have the issue with it, but we have, we're going to have two public comment periods. The first public comment is for items on the agenda. And so the instructions we have that you should have signed up on the sign-in sheet before bumper gavel does to order. So I have that sheet in front of us and you will be allowed to speak on any manner other than personnel manners and manners under litigation. You'll speak in the order in which you registered and I'll call your name and ask you to come to the front and state your name and your address and then the topic of discussion you would like to address to this council. Well, since we've got a pretty lengthy agenda, I will ask you to keep your comments to, not to exceed three minutes. It's perfectly okay if you come up following someone else and you're going to say the same thing they did. It's okay to say, do it over what he said. Okay, we'll move right along. We ask for proper decorum, I counsel, by speakers and by the audience. I'll keep control of the meeting and require the speakers and the audience to refrain from abusive and profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, applause, protest, or other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of the business of this meeting. Personal attacks on council members, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. It is inappropriate to use a public hearing or the public comment period for the purposes of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Engaging in such conduct and failing to cease with such conduct on the request of the mayor will be grounds for any of the speakers' time at the podium or removal of any disruptive person from the meeting. As you can tell from reading that, that's not Malden, but I'll have to read that. So we've got that. The first public comment is for items on the agenda. As I call your name, if for some reason it was not on the agenda, you can speak to the, at the second public comment. But the first one reserved for public items on our agenda. So if for some reason I call your name, you say, I'm not on an item on agenda, then I'll ask you to wait till the second comment period. First is Frank Warren. He'll come forward and state your name and your address and the item on the agenda.
I have to lower the microphone. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Frank Warren with HMF Americana. We are the developers of the proposed Cottage Green project at Forksholes and Ashmore Bridge Roads. As outlined in the letter to David Dearhough last Thursday, we did some, our engineers did some detailed design work and some high level cost estimates. And they came back with some numbers that were high. The proposed roundabout came in at $2 million alone, plus another half a million for road and other road improvements, turn lanes, and sidewalks. We also found out last week through more detailed design that we are short about 8,000 square feet of right of way to build the roundabout. But we are already in process with that owner and that's not going to be a hurdle, but we have to get that done. So for those reasons, I stand here tonight in front of you to request a deferral of our first reading to your October 20th meeting in order to refine the design costs and funding of those improvements. We remain committed to the project as planned and we look forward to seeing you in five weeks. I'm here tonight if you have any questions. And I think I hit my three minute mark.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I can, I can answer now or I guess now's not the appropriate time.
Any particular questions there? No? Okay, nope.
Okay.
We good.
Thank you very much.
Sir. Mr. Brandon White, I believe is also on the same item.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm Brandon White with Kimley Horn on behalf of First Citizens Bank. We're actually on a different matter. This is the second reading for 7A, 1123 East Butler Street, East Butler Road. I'm here available for questions if you have any. That's all I wanted to just introduce myself and make sure you knew us here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doug McMillan, is that on the resonant of Cottage Green or East Butler? Same routine. State your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, Doug McMillan, 157 Dodd Trail over in Harrington. And I thought I learned a lesson when I was in the military. Never sign up for anything. Let you know what you're signing for. I thought I was just signing to let you know I was here. I, I had come prepared to make some remarks about the zoning change. And I'm perfectly willing to defer that until your next meeting when you have more information from the developer. But if you're interested, I've got just a few brief remarks that hopefully I can give to you sometime.
Said the resonant of Cottage Greens. Is that the one you're talking about? Yeah, no, you're fine.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I, I admit that I'm a little bit late to the game, but I don't know if anybody in Harrington that I know that is starting to follow this didn't find out late about it. I didn't, by the time I became aware, I think there was already two or three meetings. And even to this day, if there's a zoning sign around this development, I can't find it. So I just make the, a comment there as to that point. In the last meeting that I did attend, there were a couple of references that developer made that I just wanted to, to respond to. They referred several times to, I don't know what the number was, 45,000 to 50,000 jobs in the area. I don't know why that would even be brought up because this development is not adding any jobs to the community. Maybe a few jobs, but certainly not that. They said that there would be less traffic if you develop this into residential space than commercial. I find that very difficult to believe. And I don't believe for a minute that they're willing to pay for a roundabout if they believed it would be less traffic. Now, we moved into Harrington two years ago and in two years, traffic lights have already started popping up. And even with that, you can't, I can't get out of Harrington at two or three times during the day. There's so much traffic going by. the day, there's so much traffic going by. If you look at the intersection, if you haven't gone by there, please drive to the Sphinx Station and go in all four directions for two miles. It won't take you long. You'll be stunned at the development going on. If you go to that intersection, and I'm no engineer, road engineer, but there ain't but one road of the four corners that could be widened. Now, think about that. You're letting all this new development, more residential areas coming up, right behind a corner that can't be expanded. Also, much is made about the three-mile radius. Is my time up?
Yes, 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 sir. Go ahead and finish your comment this time.
Much was made about the three-mile radius. That's nothing. Three-mile radius is one and a half miles in any direction. In this one and a half miles, I tried counting up how many developments there were. I quit counting. But I can tell you this, within three-quarters of a mile, you have Arden Woods, 806 homes, Chestnut Bridge, 578, Harrington, 610. And every one of these communities have adjacent property either being developed or, I understand, has been approved for development. We're going to turn this into Phoenix. Have you ever been out in the outskirts of Phoenix? There's nothing but mile after mile of homes. A community is nothing without some kind of cohesiveness, and oftentimes you get that out of commercial development. And I don't mean a gas station. I mean something besides that. And I just think it's a terrible mistake that you're adding, we can't support the infrastructure now. The roads are horrible, and they're worse out there than even the interstate. And if we can't support the infrastructure now, I find it hard to believe you would down the road. I think I've said more than enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Next one is written down, Mr. Hayden Parking Restrictions, is that? Okay, if you'll hold that the second one then. Okay, good. That's all we have here. Report from our City Administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items for tonight. So first off, staff learned late last week that the city's proposed SE opioid recovery fund program application was approved by the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board. Staff are busy reviewing applications and hope to hire a great program coordinator for this new program in the near future. The city is set to receive $221,414 in funding, which will pay for the new position, equipment, vehicle materials, training, and more. Once the position is filled, a presentation will be provided to council that will provide additional details of the program and our goals for this next year. So the social media rumors are also true that Publix is opening at the corner of Ashmore Bridge Road and Fork Shoals Road this Wednesday, September 17th. So that's exciting. We're excited to welcome Publix Second Store to our community, along with many other shops, dining establishments, and more planned for the southwest side of Malden. We anticipate the other in-line and out parcels under development now to come online very soon, and will serve a growing Malden and Greenville County in that area. So for many of those who attended SUE this weekend, I think it was easy to say it was a huge success, with attendance estimated at more than 3,500 people during the two-day event. We had 25 barbecue teams from around the region competing for cash prizes, bragging rights, and points towards the South Carolina State Barbecue Championship. This year's winners include first place, which was Monkey Bottom Boys, which I think is now two in a row for those guys. The Anything But winners were Men at Work BBQ was the sweet winner, and Triple Jack's BBQ was the savory winner. The People's Choice went to Barbecue Den. So we appreciate and congratulate all of our winners and the entire staff at the Malden Cultural Center, Public Works, Police and Fire Departments for making this event possible. And also thank you to our sponsors, including South Carolina Federal Credit Union, Wow Fiber Internet, Ace Hardware, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Direct Auto Insurance, Garrett's Golf Cars, Harrison's Work Gear, IPS Packaging, the Greenville News Press Port, oh, excuse me, Press Sort Plus, Renewal by Anderson, and of course, Swamp Rabbit Moving and Storage. Good job, thank you. So a couple other things real quick. So Prince of Egypt, as you may recall, just closed its final curtain, and the show was a smashing success. The show closed its run on our stage as the highest grossing show of all time with over 39,000 in revenue on a budget of less than 33,000. The show featured the largest production team, 17 to date, and showcased 16 new talents at the Malden Theater Company. MTC also holds the honor of being the first theater to show Prince of Egypt in South Carolina. Congratulations to the cast, production team, MCC staff members, and our theater program manager, Christopher Parker. Job well done for all of them. Next up, Noise is Off, starting October 9th, and then Rent on November 7th. And lastly, tonight, I wanted to share just a quick reminder for all drivers to continue to use caution at night when traveling along Highway 276 in Malden. SC DOT's paving project continues to make its way down from Greenville to 385. With this work, drivers can expect nightly lane closures, potential detours, and other delays when traveling along 276. And also scheduled for next week is the city's contractor is ready to install the new stormwater pipe at the corner of Jenkins Street and 276. This will be the final piece of the Streetscaping Project's utility relocation process. Once complete, crews will begin reconstructing the road on Jenkins Court, install new sidewalk on Jenkins Street, and complete the new railroad crossing at Jenkins and Murray Drive. We hope this work will be completed by the end of the year, and, Mr. Mayor, that's this year.
This year.
Just wanted to let you know, this year. That's my report, sir.
Reports from our standing committees, economic planning and development, Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor. The barbecue festival this past weekend, if you didn't make it, shame on you, but go ahead and put it on your calendars for next year. While it takes place at the Cultural Center, and Kaitlyn did a fantastic job, and of course, when I saw her on, I mean, she was really smiling on Friday. She was still smiling on Saturday on about four hours sleep. But it doesn't happen in a vacuum, and it doesn't happen just because of Kaitlyn. That event happens because each of our city's departments comes together to make that event a reality. So from the, from Public Works, the Police Department, Fire Department, Recreation, Community Development, everybody in the city, department heads, boots-on-the-ground staff, everybody was out there, and it was the event that it was because our departments came together. And I just want to thank each and every one of them for making it a success.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety, Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to our police explorers. I would just want y'all to personally know that we're all very aware of the dedication that y'all put into this program, and we appreciate y'all. We're proud of y'all and hope to see you in the future wearing the uniform in our city. And thanks to Sergeant Baker and Subcheck and all of the other advisors that assist y'all with working with our youth. It's super important, and we appreciate it. And if you'll bear with me, I have a couple of other announcements that are a little lengthy, but I think it's well-deserved and noted. So as, and I get emotional, so just bear with me. As noted earlier, we had a sad day last week with the loss of one of our firefighters. I think he was known chief around the firehouse as D-Rev. So Dakota was a young 29-year-old man expecting a child next year. So, yes, if y'all could please keep him and his family, and his fiance, and your thoughts and prayers, as well as our firehouse. And for a brighter note, the Police Department will have our National Night Out. It was originally scheduled in August and was rained out, so the forecast looks fantastic for Saturday. It is from 2 till 6 o'clock. If anyone's familiar with our past National Nights Out, this one, I'm sure, will be bigger and better than the past because that's what we're known to do in Malden. So tell all your friends, come out Saturday, and it's a great event for the kids to see the fire trucks and the fire, I mean, and the police cars. Some of our new vehicles will be on display, as well as bounce houses and free hot dogs and all kinds of fun stuff. So we look forward to Saturday and a pretty day for National Night Out. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. King, if I may add one note, those public safety, those departments, you usually glad they're there, but you hope you never see them. I had the opportunity to see one of them in action, so shout out to our Chief McHone and his staff for Wednesday afternoon, personal experience, professionalism, and everything that went on. Thank you, thank you, thank you. My wife thanks you, even though she wasn't real happy with you. That's okay. So, yeah, but public safety is phenomenal. Everything we have done in the city of Malden was fantastic, especially with the Fire Department. So thank the good Lord I haven't had any need for the police to be there. So we'll keep that record going, I hope. And I hadn't seen the court yet, and I don't want to. Just glad you're here, Donna. Thank you, Ms. King. Public Works, Mr. Krailin?
Yes, I'd like to amend the Public Works, following on what Mr. Mattney said. The barbecue festival went off fantastic. When you go to these festivals, you go to the Cultural Center, take a look at the grass, the mulch, the lighting, everything that goes in place, even where the trash is put, that's our Public Works Department working hard, and they've done a fantastic job. And in the last five years that I've been on council, that whole area, it looks really good, and I just want to give them the kudos for making it look so fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Finance and Policy, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report with finance and policy, but I did want to follow up on Ms. King's comments to the explorer programs. I wanted to tell you, I don't know if you can tell, but the bulk of the, my colleagues up here are substantially older than y'all. I'm only a little bit older, but you can still be an inspiration and encouragement to us. And for you to be here, I just want to thank you because it is such an inspiration to see young folks with a compass that points towards service. So what an inspiration that is for me. And I don't know if any of you or all of you will end up as police or fire or public service of some way, but just thank you for coming here, and that, to me, is a personal gratitude to see that young folks can still have that compass that points towards service. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Recreation, Mr. Allgood?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Business Development Services, Mr. Steenback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. You'll get your chance. I'll be back to you. Okay, next item on the agenda is unfinished business ordinance is the second reading. Ms. Miller, if you'll introduce the first one for us?
Yes, we have three ordinances for second reading tonight. The first one is an ordinance to rezone a two-acre tract located at 1123 East Butler Road from the S1 District to the C2 District.
Coming from Business Development Services, Mr. Steenback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we rezone the two-acre tract located at 123 East Butler Road from S1 to C2 on second reading.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Mattney. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the rezoning of 1123 East Butler, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. Miller?
Next ordinance for second reading is an ordinance to amend Section 1034 bar, brew, pub, or drinking place of the Malden zoning ordinance to clarify the application of the separation requirement between such businesses and residences.
Mr. Steenback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to amend Section 1034 bar, brew, pub, or drinking place of the Malden zoning ordinance to clarify application separation requirements between such businesses and residents on second reading.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mattney? A second by Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? Hear none, all of those in favor of the motion on second reading to amend, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. Miller?
Final ordinance for second reading is an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the city of Malden to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020.
Back to you, Mr. Steenback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the business license ordinance of the city of Malden to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 2020 on second reading.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to amend on second reading the Business License Standardization Act as required by South Carolina law, Act 176, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. I believe our next item is new business ordinances. Ms. Miller?
First ordinance is an ordinance to rezone a 25.8-acre tract located at Fork Shoals Road and Ashmore Bridge Road from the C2 District to the RM District and providing an effective date.
Yeah, I believe that's also Mr. Steenback. I feel like I'm getting picked on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was requested earlier, I would like to make a motion to hold this ordinance in, for next, for next council meeting.
Yeah, I have a motion to hold this item on our agenda until the next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mattney. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to hold until the next council meeting, the item on rezoning at Fork Shoals Road and Ashmore Bridge, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries to hold. Back to you, Ms. Miller?
Next ordinance is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a 7.2-acre portion of property owned by Takehart Church, Inc., and located at 1330 Fork Shoals Road by 100% petition method to establish a zoning classification of RM multifamily residential for said tract.
Also back to you, Mr. Steenback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As this also is a part of that other project, I would like to make a motion that we hold this for, until our next meeting in October.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mattney. No discussion? All those in favor of the motion to hold until our next meeting, the action item of annexation of 7.2 acres at 1330 Fork Shoals Road, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Miller?
Next ordinance for first reading is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Donald W. Gilland and Angie Burrows and located at 314 Hamby Drive by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of R12 residential for said property.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Steenback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we annex the property of Donald W. Gilland and Angie Burrows and located at 314 Hamby Drive by 100% petition method and establish the zoning classification of R12 residential on first reading.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Is there any discussion? Mr. Krailin?
Just for the record, this is going from R12 County to R12 City, correct? There's no zoning change, it's just going from the county to the city? Yes, I got a yes. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to annex 314 Hamby Drive at 100% method and assign it on in a R12, say aye? First reading, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. Back to you, Ms. Miller?
Final ordinance for first reading tonight is an ordinance to convey property for the Miller Road Sidewalk Project.
Looks like I gotta turn left. Ms. Krailin?
Don't hurt your neck. All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to, for approval of the ordinance to convey real property, the Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee, GLDTC, for the Miller Road Sidewalk Project.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any questions, discussions? How about an amen? We've been looking for this sidewalk for years. I don't know if that's out of order or not. Any other discussion, comments? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the conveyance of property for the Miller Road sidewalk project, GLDTC? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda... Ms. Miller.
We have three items tonight coming through the standing committees. First is school resource officer grant in agreement with Green Charter School.
Leave this public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval of an agreement for school resource officer, for the school resource officer program with Green Charter for the school year of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and beyond.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Allgood. Got it. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve an agreement with Green Charter School for SRO pro officers for this year and beyond, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Miller.
Next item is a mutual aid agreement with Clemson University Police Department.
Also public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the mutual aid agreement with Clemson University Police Department to assist with event security and other activities as needed.
King, you said that very well.
Thank you. I can't say that word when I have to.
Is there a second for the motion to approve? Second for Mr. Craylon. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve a mutual aid agreement with Clemson University Police Department, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. As y'all can tell, this football season, we enjoy the banter. Ms. Miller.
Final item is the part-time administrative judge appointment.
Also public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of the Honorable Jonathan Smith as part-time administrative judge for the city of Malden.
Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Craylon. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we do need a timeframe, either a two-year or four-year appointment with the motion, please.
If I could restate my motion, Mr. Mayor, to, motion to approve the appointment of Jonathan Smith as the part-time administrative judge throughout the expiration of the two-year appointment term.
Is that change okay with you, Mr. Craylon? Is there a second? All right, that was fine. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the Honorable Jonathan Smith as the administrative judge for the city of Malden for remaining two-year terms, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. We are now back to public comment for non-agenda items. Mr. Hayden, you're with us. There you go. State your name and address.
Michael Hayden, five-two-five Flying Squirrel Way. That's Hidden Lake Reserve. Right near where the new Publix is opening. The discussion I'm going to bring up is parking on one side of the street. I missed the opportunity with Chief McHone to really get a hold of this, ahead of this discussion with him. We've exchanged some emails. I sent you an email last year, and actually, three of you sent me to Seth, who's given me some advice and guidance in that, that area. But it sounds like where we're at right now is if we can recommend, and that what the HOA wants, that the city would be amenable to talk to us about how to do parking restrictions on one side of the street, mostly to allow for emergency vehicles to pass. We've had two incidents in our neighborhood where there was a delay in ambulances getting down to families because of the fact that we have people parking on both sides and their, the streets are narrow. So I have actually, and I think Seth, you may have a copy of this. Yep. We have diagram with the board thinks would work, but the opinion of the board is if you choose to do exactly the opposite, we're fine with that as well, as long as people are only parked on one side of the street. Our neighborhood was constructed with two-car garages and two-car driveways. So everyone who lives there should be able to park off the street. It's when we have visitors and we have prayer groups and many other things that bring visitors in. So if they're all forced to park on one side of the street, there's plenty of room for vehicles to get through, including a school bus that comes through in the afternoon and, and other vehicles. But the biggest concern we've had is ambulances getting through. That's pretty much it. If, if we need to talk about money, I can talk to my, my members about paying for the signs if we need to do that, but we know that they have to be Malden City signs to be enforceable. That's it.
Any questions, Mr. Hayden? And you're in touch with Mr. Duncan.
Your neighborhood, does it have sidewalks?
It has sidewalks on one side of each street. The preference, with the exception of Beaver Lodge Way, is that they, people, at least the board thinks, everybody parks on the sidewalk side. Beaver Lodge Way, all the front yards are on the non-sidewalk side, and the other side, where the sidewalk is, are side yards for people. Plus, it's bad turning if people were parked on the sidewalk side on that street. Otherwise, we think sidewalk side makes the most sense.
Any other questions? Okay, and you're in touch with Mr. Duncan, so you're in the right avenue there, so we'll go from there. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Next item on the agenda is council concerns. Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, we're glad that you're with us tonight.
Thank you. Me too.
Gave everybody a scare, but we're glad that you're feeling better. The, the second thing, I know that I made a point to thank all of the city departments for the Barbecue Festival a few minutes ago, but I want to take a minute to thank all of the city departments again because on the twenty-fourth of this month, we will celebrate or observe, I don't think there's a celebration to it, but observe the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Helene coming through. There was a tremendous amount of damage done, obviously, in western North Carolina, but we had our share of it here, too. And the men and women who are in this room, who serve this city, and each of our departments made sure that the city kept running, that there were no hiccups. Mr. Administrator, you lost a lot of sleep. And so as we get ready to observe that one-year anniversary, I just want to say thank you again for everybody who kept the city running.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, any other council concerns? Ms. King.
Not a concern, but just a follow-up to Mr. Mattney and your point earlier with thanking the Fire Department for coming to your assistance over at the senior center. And we're, yes, you gave us a scare, and we're glad that you are much better and that Lady Di is keeping, keeping an eye on you and, and keeping him pinned down. But also to Mr. Mattney's, to his point on a different topic, but thanks to our, our city staff, I got a little emotional earlier talking about with the loss of our firefighter. But this city's special, folks, and, you know, and I'll get emotional again. Good Lord, it's been a bad week. A lot of emotional things going on, but you guys just come together and always do the right thing. And, you know, it's tough when you lose somebody, but when it's a young person, it seems like it's even harder. So y'all make me proud that you're our leaders and, you know, you're always there for the family, for each other, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. King. Mr. Steenback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's been talked about several times, but there's a, there was a couple of things during the festival this weekend. I had the opportunity for the first time in forever to actually go Saturday, which that was new for me. I didn't have any sports for once, but a couple of things I saw. I saw Mr. Fleeman checking the trash can. That's pretty cool. That, you know, that, that, there's no job that the leadership of the city is unwilling to do. You know, Bart, Willie, and Andre, they handed out a lot of butts. And I, a lot, a lot, over a thousand pounds of them, I believe, because I can tell you that truck was low. And then Greg, I don't know how you did with the weatherman, but that was awesome. Thank you for dialing the weather up like that. That was, that was wonderful. But yeah, just constantly, I constantly admire our staff, top to bottom, and how they work together, how everyone pitches in. To Carol's point, it's, it's an amazing place to be and to be a part of, and I don't really do other thing other than just smile and try to remember people's names. So I'm really, really appreciative of that. Thank you, guys. Thank all of y'all for that, sir.
Thank you, sir. And on that note, and he knows I pick on him unmercifully, but I actually have a picture of our Public Works Director with the pitchfork and a wheelbarrow moving. Come on. Our department heads are out there working just hard. He knows I pick on him all the time, but I, I had to stop, leave my car in the middle of the street to take this picture because he really was having a pitchfork in his hand. So Matthew, thank you for making our grounds look fantastic for our festival and...
You sure he wasn't chasing you with that?
Well, his other guys were surrounding me. And I think this was just, no, that was Monday, wasn't it? Yep, so Monday. So thank you very much for that. So I told someone earlier, we have a phenomenal team. And we've stayed true to our visions, and we've hashed them out in our discussions. But once we approved them, and not everybody got everything they wanted for this, that, or the other, but we stayed true to our vision, and we made a lot of progress. And I am so proud of this city. And no, I'm sorry, it's not twelve hundred people on one red light anymore. As Lady Di reminds me quite often that she wishes it was. But I think we're pushing thirty thousand people, and now the projection is we'll be at forty thousand people by twenty thirty-five or so. Twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five. So I hope to be on my little corner, sitting on the front porch with a adult beverage and enjoying the city of Malden because it is a phenomenal place. Been here all life, as some of the others have. And we have our youth movement going over here, so, except for Mr. Reynolds, and so we appreciate that very much. So you can tell we have fun, but we do get serious. We got a phenomenal staff, and I am so proud of where we've come. And always been that way in our years growing up here, but it is fantastic place, and I recommend anybody live here. And if there's something you don't like, let us know, and we'll do the best we can to accommodate you. And sometimes that's just helping you pack your bag. I didn't say that publicly. So we appreciate that very much. So anything else? I rattled on enough. What do I hear on the Germans?
So moved.
Pardon say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Eight oh six.